It is 7:01. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I was actually going to ask Charlie to do it, but Sarah, would you mind leading us tonight?
Sure, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Charlie is here. Okay, all members of the Board of Selectmen are present. I do have an agenda item I'd like to add, and it's a communication item. It's Agenda Item 7D, a memorandum from the interim planner, Mike D'Amato, regarding political signage. This comes from an email that Selectmen Nordell sent earlier in the week. I did forward it to everybody when I got it, but I just want to make sure that was included in the packet. So could I have a motion to add that as Communication Item 7D?
I'll move to Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll move to add the MOU from the interim planner regarding political signs as Item 7D.
Is there a second?
Selectmen Nordell will second that.
Just as a point of clarification, it's a memorandum, it's not an MOU.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Yeah, amend that.
All in favor of adding Agenda Item 7D, the memo from the interim town planner? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
You guys are in alphabetical order tonight. Okay. Approval of September 3, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review them?
I'll make a motion to accept the Thursday, September 3, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Selectmen Nordell will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any corrections or discussion? Seeing none, Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
Minutes are adopted.
Point of order, Jason, don't we need to approve the agenda as amended?
You are correct. I missed that, thank you. So I would ask that we go back to Agenda Item number four and accept the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
Selectmen Nordell, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amended agenda? Seeing none, Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
Thank you for catching that, Charlie.
No problem.
September 17.
Selectmen Nordell will move to approve the meeting minutes from September 17, 2020.
Is there a second?
Were we just supposed to second that?
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there, are there any corrections or any discussion?
Yes, Sarah Muska Selectmen, I just found on page three that Gaudreau, for Karen Gaudreau, was spelled incorrectly. Her last name, I think it's just the O should be an A, G-A-U-D-R-E-A-U.
Yep. Any other corrections?
Well, if you can do spelling corrections, and Tom Lasner's name was spelled incorrectly, I believe, on the first page.
No, that's spelled correctly.
Okay. Then I've been spelling it wrong.
Any, any other corrections? Seeing none, a motion or a vote to accept the minutes as amended? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
We're on to public participation. This is one of two opportunities for the public to address the board. If there are any members of the public who would like to address us, we just asked that we maintain some semblance of order, which is a little difficult on Zoom. So you're, this is your opportunity. What would you like to talk about? Are there any members that want to address the board? Are there any, any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity for this later in the agenda. We'll move on to communications. And there are a number of them tonight. The first is kind of a two-parter. I had a constituent inquiry from the, from Main Street in Warehouse Point, asked for some assistance for, to get DOT to repair their road earlier in the summer. There were a number of constituents actually that voiced that concern. And I just wanted to share my initial correspondence with Commissioner Giuliani, and also that they said yes to, to the improvements on South Water, or South Main Streets, prior to the end of this season. And I thought it was just nice to share that DOT not only was responsive to our concerns, but took the urgency to respond, hopefully, prior to the snowfalling. But they agreed with the residents that there is a present issue there that can be corrected relatively cheaply, and that they'll do this fall. So I wanted to share that. I'm, I'm sorry, Charlie?
That, Jason, they've actually already marked the road for
Beautiful.
sewers and electrical and everything else, so CBYDs already been there and marked it all up, so.
So, do we need to make sure we tell the, our friends over at WPCA, there's going to be some work done?
Wouldn't that be the state's obligation? I, I would be happy to share that correspondence with, with Art, but I think that is actually DOT's, well, you're right. I'll have Josh send him a letter.
Ask them if they noticed the markings on the road.
The second is a project that is being done through the Lieutenant Governor's Office in coordination with the Commissioner of Education. Many people are probably aware that this is a presidential year. And because of that, there is an opportunity to run a mock election in public school systems around Connecticut. The Lieutenant Governor's reached out personally and asked for the town's support in making that happen. So it's actually an opportunity that's made available to local school districts through the Department of Education. But I did write a letter in support of that, and it was sent to the Superintendent, the Board of Education, the Lieutenant Governor, the Commissioner of Education, and to you guys. This is one of those projects that when I was a kid, actually got me interested in the political process. And I just think it's such a cool thing to be able to continue that, and maybe inspire somebody else to be an active participant as they, as they get older. The third one was done. I know this is an issue that is very near and dear to Sarah's heart, so I didn't want to let the opportunity pass without commemorating October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm sure she'll have comments on activities planned throughout the month, but I just wanted to show the town's support for that issue, because I know it is important to her.
Thank you.
And, you're welcome. And the last one is the one that was emailed to you folks earlier this evening. Selectmen Nordell had sent an email earlier in the week with concerns about political signs being up before the regulated dates in our town zoning regulations. And so I asked the interim town planner to actually do some research on that, because my first understanding was that we were already within the period where it would be too late to send out a notice and correct the action before the action was corrected by the calendar. Mike actually did a good job of reaching out and finding case law that actually suggests that our regulations are not conforming with what Connecticut law is. So that's something that happens. But he prepared a memo that I shared with you guys earlier, and that I'm hoping Peg will include in the meeting minutes. And it also will be something that he brings to the Planning and Zoning Commission to update that regulation, which is now not in compliance with the case law. Okay. The next one is a less happy thing, and it's not really a resignation, but Marty Zagallo has indicated that she is not interested in accepting another term as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Marty's been on there for a long time. That's a really solid board with a lot of institutional knowledge and experience, and to lose one of them is, is a blow. I certainly want to thank Marty for her years of service, for the perspective that she brings, and wish her luck as she goes on to do whatever she's going to be doing next. So there's going to be a vacancy for that, and although I don't have, hold on one second. Although I don't have a letter of resignation yet, I'm expecting that there will be a resignation from a regular member sometime in the month of October as well. There's already, one of the other alternates has indicated her interest in stepping forward, but there's going to be some turnover on that commission, just because of people either splitting time in, in their retirement years or moving on to other opportunities. So while it's not a resignation, I think we should still accept Marty's decision with regret.
Make a motion to accept with regret Marty Zagallo's resignation or expiration of her term for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would, I would second your comments. She's been on there a long time and has been a solid and very helpful member, and so I want to thank her for all the volunteering for that long.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further comments? Seeing none, Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
I would regret.
Selectmen, Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
Next one is a reappointment. Paul Anderson's term on the WPCA actually expires today. So he has the opportunity to be appointed for another five-year term.
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll move to reappoint Paul Anderson to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a term expiring October 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
All right. The next ones are new appointments. One is the American Heritage River Commission, and two more to the Diversity Council.
Make a motion that we accept the appointment of, we approve the appointment of Abbott Schultz Jr., Republican, for the American Heritage River Commission, for a term expiring November 1, 2023, and that's completing a vacated term.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll second.
Any discussion? I actually got to meet Mr. Schultz last week, and he is very interested in becoming an active part of that group. I think he's got a lot of energy, and I think it's, it's nice to welcome new blood onto that. Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
Joseph Blackwood?
Can we do both of these together?
We can.
I would make a motion to accept the appointment of Joseph Blackwood on the Diversity Council for our term expiring August 20, 2024. And Jonathan Wise, also in the Diversity Council, also for a term, a term expiring August 20, 2024.
Selectmen Nordell will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Jason, does that
Yes, ma'am.
Jason, does that require that we take a look at party affiliations, or is that exempt from that regulation?
It wouldn't be exempt, but we're not there yet. They can go up to nine, so that means no party can have more than five seats, and this is only the fifth member seated. So we're not at that point.
Okay, just wanted to make people aware that moving forward.
So this is five?
Yep.
Is that enough to get started?
It is.
Cool.
Actually, isn't this, oh yes, this would be five, yep, that's great.
It'd be Anna and Rick, Rich, Laborious.
Bob, and Joe, and Johnny. I actually have a constituent referral for them, too. I'm very excited about handing that one off. Any further discussion on the appointments? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
You guys are a quiet bunch tonight.
We're all business.
All right. The next one is a service contract. One Digital is our insurance consultant. They were, they have been around for a little while now, and they typically would shop around the insurance, the different insurances that we offer when budget time comes around, or when contracts come due, or when there was a need to shop around insurance. We now are on the Connecticut Prevention Partnership 2.0, and we're locked into that for three years. There is still a need for these guys, although I don't, I'm not really interested in committing to a three-year term. There is a severability provision in there. One of the things that we have not done in quite a long time is shop around the life insurance benefit that we offer to employees. We also haven't seen a considerable increase in that either. But in Amy's experience, when she was in Canton, they had, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just use this as an example, but something like five or six years with no premium increase at all in their life insurance. And they thought, hey, we're doing great. We've had a flat insurance rate for the last five years. Well, when they finally went to shop it, it turned out that they had still been overpaying in their premium by something like 30 or 35%. So one of the things that we want them to be doing in between now and the end of June, is actually reshopping our life insurance to see if we're in fact in that same position where we think we have a really good deal, but in fact, we're still overpaying even though it's been relatively flat. So that's the main thing that we're going to be asking them to do in the next 10 months or so, as well as some compliance work that is relatively technical that we just hand off to them to do. I'm not sure that we need to keep them for the full term, full three-year term, but I am comfortable entering into that agreement, because there is the termination provision with 120 days' notice. Any questions or comments?
I think it's a good idea.
Can I get a, a motion to authorize my signature?
I'll make a motion to authorize, first, Selectmen Jason Bowser, to enter into the continual agreement between digital insurance and the town and the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Just for clarification, I'm not signing on behalf of the town and the BOE. The superintendent will sign on behalf of the, the town, or I'm sorry, on behalf of the Board of Education. We're still, we're still figuring out if that would be in two separate agreements, or if we would just be having a three-signature line on this. The town's share is 18,000, the Board of Ed's share is roughly 40,000. And that's done based on percentage of employees. They have almost 300. So if there's no other discussion? Selectmen Baker? Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
All right. This next one is a grant between the town and the Greater Hartford Transit District for operating expenses associated with the town's dialerite program. We front about $14,000, and we get reimbursed about $7,000 of that. And that goes, that's general fund revenue that gets matched against the town's expenses towards running that, that program and that service.
Jason, the contract that is retroactive until on July 1?
Yeah.
Were we behind, or were they behind in?
They were behind. I didn't get it till September 18.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's not us.
Any questions or comments on the grant?
You need a motion?
I do, yes.
Okay, I make a motion to enter into the contract, the Operating Assistant Grant Contract with
Greater Hartford Transit District.
Great Hartford Transit, I wanted to get it ready. I had the district in my mind, between the Great Hartford Transit District and the town of East Windsor.
Second.
Is there a second? Motion made by Marie, seconded by Sarah. Any discussion? Seeing none, Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
All right. Okay, when we approved, I can't remember if it was the Broadbrook Fire District Ordinance or the Charter, we also, this board and subsequently followed up, I think, last meeting, asked about the explanatory text to explain the three questions pertaining to the Charter that'll be on the ballot, as well as the text of the establishment of the Broadbrook Fire District. That's before you. There are some changes that I need to make to it. And the reason for that is really just numbering. I'm going to share my screen in just a second. But you guys all have the initial draft in your packet, and I am going to share this one. And all, all that's really happening here is some things are being moved around to comport with the layout of the ballot. In the draft that was sent to you, the first question pertains to the establishment, or the ordinance establishing the Broadbrook Fire Department. That's actually question number four on the ballot, not question number one. So that was moved to, in my draft, it's just reorganized to represent the numbering. So question one would really be, the question pertaining to the grammatical and technical changes to the Charter is question one. Question two is the renaming of the Town Treasurer to the Town Finance Director. Question three is the procedure for public hearings at the outset of the budget process. And question four is the establishment of the Broadbrook Fire Department. So that, the only change there, and the associated numbering in the paragraphs, is just changed to represent how the ballot is laid out, to eliminate confusion. So that said, I'm going to take this off the screen, and if there are any other changes to the subtext, we can talk about those, but I just wanted to let you guys know that the, the ordering has to be rearranged so it matches the ballot. Both of these are, this, this document was prepared by Pullman and Comley, and it was reviewed by the town clerk to make sure that it is neutral in its framing of the questions before the voters. So we've checked that box. I just need the Board of Selectmen to make any other changes that you guys would like to make. And if there's substantive changes, I'll need to go back to both the town attorney and the town clerk to get that published. Marie?
Yeah, on the first paragraph, the last line, it says, "This explanatory text will be furnished to each applicant for an absentee ballot and be made available for public distribution and at the polling places." So if they're going to furnish it with each applicant for an absentee ballot, does that mean that this has to go out with the absentee ballot? Is that what they're saying? Because that's going to be time-consuming, and I don't know that, that's the intent.
Yeah, I don't, we can strike that. That was, that was prior to the legislature changing the absentee ballot process this year.
Okay.
So I can, I can flag that, run that past Pullman, and make sure we can strike that.
Okay.
The alternative is, my office is going to have to stuff a lot of absentee ballot follow-up letters.
Well, if, I mean, if you want to save on poachers, that's the way to do it, is to have them do it if that's your intent. I just wasn't sure what the intent is.
No, we want to make sure that the document is available. So what we can do for that, we can make it available in the, at the two polling places on Election Day. We can make it available on the website. We can make it available in the town clerk's office, the typical places you would make things like that readily available. Other questions or comments?
Put it on the town Facebook, I've posted a few times on the town Facebook site, too, just to keep every few days reposting it, you know? Or maybe weekly.
Other questions or comments? Marie?
Now, do you just need a consensus on this to move it forward?
I think I need you guys to approve this. I'm going to ask you guys to approve this. With the, the changes indicated, renumbering to comport with the ballot layout.
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll move to approve the town of East Windsor explanatory text draft with the corrections made to ballot numbers.
Ballot questions, one through four?
Ballot questions, one through four.
As well as the, any potential edit to the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Okay. Motion has been made with a friendly amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Sarah?
I just think that, you know, this is a really good thing, so people are able to understand what the questions actually mean, so they know what they're voting on, so glad that we did this.
Share widely.
Will do.
Any opportunity, just, we want to, the whole point of doing these questions on the presidential ballot is to get as much public feedback as we can, so we want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to make that informed public feedback. Any other questions or comments?
Would it be possible to get it in the, I don't know when the next newsletter's coming out?
Not till after.
No other comment?
I do kind of wonder, well, I'm going to investigate if we could get it actually in the newspaper. Any other questions or comments? Motion has been made and seconded. It's been discussed. Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordell?
Aye.
All right. So the, the next thing I want to bring to you guys, I think I can exercise under the executive orders that are in place, but I'd like the consensus of the board to do it. And I, in, in normal circumstances, would not ask this, but because of the circumstances around the pandemic and a workforce that has, a municipal workforce that has some high-risk health concerns, I'd like to close the town on Election Day, which would keep roughly 2,000 people out of each building while we have employees around. I just think that this year in particular lends that, that there is a safety concern around that, and I, that's one of my thought processes, and I just wanted to get your feedback before moving forward on that. I also spoke with Marie, and I don't want to have a vote of the board to do this, and want to use the executive authority to do it, out of concern about establishing any type of precedent that could be bargained later. I don't want it to become the common practice that the town facilities are closed on Election Day. But I do think in the midst of a pandemic with a potential resurgence on the horizon, it makes some sense to do that. So in order to, to not establish that precedent by an action of the board, I want to use the executive authority to do that. I want to use the executive authority to do that. But I want you guys to give me some feedback on that before I, I make that determination.
Jason, I apologize. I didn't give it any thought when we were discussing, but the town clerk's office has to work that day.
So how does that affect things? What do I need to do there?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I don't know if you can, if you can do it and exclude them from it. That would create a problem. So I'm not sure where we got to go with it.
Well, I have some time, particularly if I don't need a vote to do it. I have some time to figure out a recourse. I was just hoping not to expend a ton of legal dollars to try and get to the bottom of that. But that is a question that I should investigate a bit further.
But I agree with the safety concerns of the employees with the amount of people that are going to be in both of those buildings.
We have about, we have about 1,500 absentee ballots so far requested, which is about five times the norm. And if you extrapolate out past presidential turnout levels, that means that there will be about 2,000 people per building on Election Day, which is about 180 an hour or three a minute.
Times the number of the kids that are going to be coming in with them.
Right. Alan, Sarah, Charlie, any thoughts?
Go ahead, Charlie.
My other concern is, and I know it's half the due date, but you're only two days past the due date of tax collection as well.
Yeah, that's, believe me, we're not going to be in, I'll, I'll cover that later in my report. Tax collection went very, very well. And there still is a means, there's, the Dropbox is still outside Town Hall for that. Other questions or comments? Alan, Sarah?
No concern. I think it's a prudent thing.
No, nothing really to add. I just, if, I would just advertise if, you know, if you're going to go forward that this is going to happen in case anyone needs to do business on that day. They're aware that they can't. But I, I understand the concern for the people working the polls and the people working in Town Hall. I spoke with Karen Goodrow the other day and I know it's a lot on everybody's mind. So, health and safety should come first at this time, I think.
One of the things we did during the primary, if you'll recall, is Joe Sauerhofer actually had the, the hallway laid out in such a way so that one door was clearly an entrance and one door was clearly an exit. That won't be possible in presidential turnout. The numbers just wouldn't support it. And if there's inclement weather, we're, we're going to need people to queue up inside. And there's just no way to do that and segregate employees from that potential exposure with the layout of the building. So, actually, this, this conversation has been helpful. And Marie, your point's well taken. I'll do a little bit more research on what I need to do there. And then, actually, I'll, I'll just keep this as an agenda item for the October 15th meeting and give you guys kind of an update and make sure we're all on the same page at that point. There's no, no need to force the decision tonight when I don't have to make it tonight.
Okay.
Tax refunds.
Wow, this moved along pretty quick. I'm shocked.
I said that at the outset and was, was reprimanded for it. And I still think there, we could go off the rails.
I'm still going to reprimand you because we have an executive session, so.
That'll be short too.
Sarah Muska, Selectmen, I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling $1,020.57.
Selectman Nordell will second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
All right. Selectmen's reports. Charlie, the much-promised property tax collection update is coming. As many of you know, the Board of Selectmen postponed the due date for the first installment of this year's property taxes until today, which was the latest possible day for extension under Governor Lamont's executive orders. I think we all recognize that the economic shutdown due to COVID-19 may have had an adverse effect on people in town and we wanted to provide them with some measure of relief. I am very pleased to say that our collection rate has surpassed the first installment rates of each of the last three years and by a significant amount. Typically, well, in 2017, the town had collected 52.8%. In 2018, we collected 51.98%. In 2019, 54.54%, and this year, 56.13%. So we're about 4% over the average of those years. For the Warehouse Point Fire District, in 2017, we collected 92.7%. In July of 18, we collected 94.9%. Last year, 93.6%, and this year, 97.9%. So we are in very good shape in terms of tax collection. And that's, first of all, I'm glad we did that. I think that was the right thing to do. I'm glad that it was a tool that either helped a lot or wasn't necessary. And I'm glad that the folks in the tax collector's office were able to compile that data as quickly as they were able to because the period just closed. This is as of about 6:30 this evening. So that's as close to accurate as we can get right now. It's a, it's good numbers. Last Thursday, the town received a substantial donation of non-perishable food items, books, and cosmetics from Feed the Children. Special thanks to Price Right and Hunger Connecticut for coordinating that donation and to our great staff in the Department of Recreation and Community Services and in the Public Works Department for their, their help in getting that donation back to town. It was literally tons of product. We sent minivans, flatbeds, dump trucks to, to pick up the free distribution that was happening in Windsor. That will be used for the East Windsor Power Pack Program. Some of that has been donated to Park Hill and the remainder will be donated to Pauline Stockpot Soup Kitchen. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee has begun its process for the next fiscal year. And they've had their organizational meeting, which took place on September 21st. They will be holding additional meetings on October 13th, 19th, 21st, and 22nd. I think those are the dates. And their recommendations are due by charter back to the Board of Selectmen, not later than November 1st. There are still vacancies for members on that commission, so if anybody knows anybody who would like to serve, please let them know. Gravel Pit Solar has begun the necessary approval process through the Connecticut Siting Council. The first pre-hearing conference concerning that project was yesterday. And the formal process commencing, is commencing next month. That will include a virtual public hearing, which will be held on November 12th. After the hearing is concluded, the transcript from that hearing and the record will be kept on file in the town clerk's office. If the approval process goes as expected, it is conceivable that that project will break ground in mid-spring of next year. They're, they're targeting April right now. Governor Lamont has announced that Phase 3 of Connecticut's reopening will take effect next Thursday. Some key changes that'll take place on that date include an increase to 75% capacity for indoor events like restaurants, personal services, hair salons, barber shops, and libraries. An increase to 50% capacity for outdoor venues such as amphitheaters and racetracks. Opening of indoor performing arts venues up to a 50% capacity, all of which still require masks and social distancing unless the state's COVID-19 safety requirements dictate otherwise. For private group gatherings at commercial venues, crowd sizes will be increased to a maximum of 100 people indoors and 150 people outdoors. And religious activities indoors can now increase up to 50% capacity or 200 people. Bars and nightclubs are still to remain closed. I did speak with Governor Lamont two nights ago. And he is confident that we're ready for Phase 3 at this point in time and that it's time to give it a try. He also cautioned that the COVID-19 numbers in our region, particularly in New York, are seeing a resurgence. We've seen a little bit of that here in Connecticut as well. And that at some point, we may need to reconsider whether or not moving forward is appropriate at this time and scale things back a bit. But for the time being, we're, we're looking pretty good and moving forward. That's all I have. Selectman De Souza. Marie, you're muted.
Sorry. The only thing I have is on September 21st, I attended the East Windsor Housing Authority meeting. The only thing that they discussed besides financials was the tub-to-shower conversion project with the Small City Grant. They have, the contractors came out, they've got, there are pieces completed. And now they're just trying to make a decision as what they're going to do going forward. So that's still on a hold. The CHFA COVID-19 Funding Program was approved for all 84 households at Park Hill. They'll be receiving a $30 gift card to be utilized for food, personal hygiene items, household items at the local Dollar General. So that was approved and those should be going out if they haven't gone out already. That's all I have.
Charlie?
I don't have any meeting liaisons to report. The only thing I was supposed to have this last two weeks was beautification, but that was canceled. Just want to remind everybody, Abby's Walk is coming up this weekend. It's virtual. And that's it. That's all I have.
Sarah?
Okay. On Wednesday, September 23rd, I attended the Board of Education meeting held on Zoom. The board received a visitation from the new school resource officer, Officer Nicole Devlin. Officer Devlin was appointed to this position in late summer and gave the board a recap on her background and her vision for her new role. The district's new food service director, Greg Powers, and superintendent Dr. Christine DeBarge applied for the National School Lunch Program Grant. And I am happy to report that out of 54 applicants, East Windsor was one of the 19 districts to receive this grant. These funds will be used to replace a 54-year-old oven, which is located in the middle school cafeteria. The Board of Education.
54 years old?
It was 54 years old, yeah.
Wood fired?
That's like Charlie's age.
The board was updated on the declining state of the high school roof. This has been a CIP request submitted for many years, estimated at about $3.7 million to replace the roof. The roof was recently inspected and there are approximately 70 bubbles on the roof that definitely need attention before snowfall, totaling about $17,000 for those repairs. And the board will receive further details at their next meeting on that. There was a lengthy discussion that included a lot of public input regarding allowing spectators at home sporting events. Dr. DeBarge indicated that there was no vote taken by the board that the decision, this was about the decision to not allow fans to be at home games. And that was determined by her and the Athletic Committee at the high school. There were many factors which led her to her decision, including considering the liability of the district, CIC recommending no spectators allowed to watch the games. And she's waiting for further direction from the Department of Public Health in regards to athletics. And I know this is constantly changing and constantly getting updated. So I'll discuss that after their next meeting as to where they are currently. And due to a lack of interest, there will be no high school girls volleyball team competing this year. East Windsor's Teacher of the Year, Dr. Kim Helleridge, has been named one of the 14 finalists for Connecticut Teacher of the Year. On Tuesday, September 29th, I attended the Council on Foreign Relations State and Local Officials webinar on economic recovery from the coronavirus pandemic. This featured Sebastian Malaby, Senior Fellow for International Economics at the Council on Foreign Relations, and Brian Sigretts, Director of State Fiscal Studies for the National Association of State Budget Officers. There were elected officials from 44 states in attendance. And it was an informative discussion on the current state of our economy due to the coronavirus pandemic. The variations among states were significant in some cases. As states like Nebraska and Utah, which have a lot of agriculture and farming land, which don't rely heavily on revenue, were affected, at least like states like New York and New Jersey were affected heavily because they rely on tourism. The hospitality, tourism, and manufacturing industries were impacted the most around the country, with a lot depending on a second outbreak. And considering that the fiscal year 2021 might be, you know, worse than 2020 in some states, discussion on how to balance budgets at the state and local level included the possibilities of ways to reduce spending, possibly raising taxes, using the rainy day fund, relying more heavily on property taxes, and reevaluating state government. There are hopes that Congress will act in the next week or two to provide additional federal aid to states and municipalities. Given what people across the world have been put through due to the virus, I think people are more aware of people suffering and are more compassionate and helpful to others. The deadline to complete the U.S. Census was extended to October 5th. If you haven't filled yours out, please do so and I'll post the link. It is important that we receive an accurate count to ensure that we receive the appropriate federal funding for education, infrastructure, social services, amongst other things. Selectman Nordell commented already on Abby's Walk. And October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And thank you to the first selectman for his proclamation. One in three women and one in four men and 30 to 50% of transgender people will experience some type of domestic abuse in their lifetime. If we continue to talk about the epidemic and create awareness, those needing help will know where to turn and that there are people they can trust. On Sunday, I will be participating in the Jennifer Dulles Memorial Walk to End Domestic Violence, which is hosted by the Intervell House. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Selectman Baker?
Nothing interesting to report to you this week, so I yield back my time.
Fair enough. This is, we're going to go on to the second public participation on the agenda. This is the public's second opportunity to address the board. Are there any comments from members of the public?
I have a few comments.
Sure. If you could just identify your, your name and your address, please, sir.
Yeah, I live on Highland Avenue. My name is Michael Kavalsik.
The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, I have a few questions about this executive order for closing of the town during the voting section. The voting session. Number one, is this going to be a paid day off?
It would be.
And are the people that are coming into the town offices to vote, will they be required to wear masks?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I, I believe the answer is yes, but I'm not 100% sure of that. Marie, do you know? You're muted, Marie.
The answer to that question, or town, town buildings are required to have masks. There's signage on all the buildings. But the Secretary of State's Office has said they're recommending masks be worn, but that they can't mandate it. That's the last I heard. I don't know if anything has changed because they're still going back and forth on stuff. But I would require for people to wear the mask for their own safety and safety of others. But until we get the final thing from the Secretary of State's Office, I'm going to go with people should be wearing masks. Although, the Register of Voters, Karen Goodrow, had put out on Facebook because we couldn't anybody to wear that.
Okay. And I would think the register of, I would think the register of voters would have to be in the building during voting hours. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let me give you a suggestion. Since it is going to be a paid, a paid day off and the taxpayers are paying for this, why can they not come into work, the town employees, lock their doors, put a sign on a door that says, "No public business tonight", especially the town clerk's office? And since it is three days after, after tax. after taxes are required to be paid, there's gonna be plenty of work in there for them to do. So they could lock their doors, and they could put a note on the door that says, "No Public Business is Being Conducted Today", but to give them a paid day off on the taxpayer's dime, I, I don't see it. I mean, I have to go to work. I'm sure you have to go to work. Right? If you did not go to work, you would not get paid. So why can they not come to work? Like I said, lock the doors, have no contact with anybody in the building. I'm gonna have contact with the, the people that are the, in the voting areas. So, you know, they're, I, I just don't understand why it would be a paid day off. If they would like to take the day off without pay, I can see that. But to be, to pay, uh, to pay these, these people that are being paid by the town not to work because there, there's something, uh, you know, going to happen to them. I don't see that.
But as, I appreciate your comments, sir. As I think you heard, it's a, an open item at the moment. There's some additional due diligence that, that we need to do before charting, of course. Does you have anything else you'd like to say?
Well, no, but I would like to know who's gonna make this decision, and is the public gonna be involved in making this decision? I mean, we're talking about a lot of money here.
Under the executive order, it would fall to me to make that determination.
And the public will not have any statement? I mean, besides myself?
Right. The, the order, the order is left to the CEO.
Okay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments? I see, Joe, I'm gonna pronounce your name poorly, and I'm sorry. Joe Malinfont? Did I get that correct? Mr. Malinfont? Mr. Malinfont, did you want to address the board? I cannot hear him. Can anybody else hear him? I've seen him mute and unmute a couple times.
Same here.
No, I can't hear anything.
Maybe, uh, Mr. Malinfont, if he does intend on speaking or, or, and can't, maybe put something in the chat that we could then address.
That would be good. Are there any other comments from members of the public? I'll give Joe just a moment.
Says he can't get his mic.
To work. Okay, I got him. So, is there a specific topic you'd like to cover, sir? South Road. Sure, that's, that's an agenda item that we're gonna take up in a, a future meeting. It's not, there, it's not ready to be discussed yet. There's, that's something that we'll talk about either at our next meeting or the one thereafter, I think. Okay? Nothing's gonna happen until then. Any other comments from members of the public? Okay. Seeing none, we do have an executive session tonight, so I'd ask for a, a motion to go into executive session subject to CGS 1-206D.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session under Connecticut General Statute Section 1-206D.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker. Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye. And Joe put up another chat.
What?
Sir, I see that. We, we will be, as soon as something is. Until then, nothing is. So we're gonna go into executive session at 7:56. Peg, I do not expect that there is gonna be a vote, so the only thing that you'll need to catch at some point is the adjournment time.
Okay, Jason, just the board, no other people?
Just the five of us. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Bye, Peg.
Bye. What's gonna do is leave?
It is 8:36. We're coming out of executive session. I have no further business to come before the Board of Selectmen. Unless any other member does, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Selectman Norde will move to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:36.
Motion made by Charlie, seconded by Sarah. It's non-debatable. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Thank you all for a productive evening. Have a great night.